Thank you, everybody, for coming to the April meeting. I succeeded in scaring both my April mates away. Tom actually is unexpectedly, this is the first board meeting he's missed in his 20 years as a administrator. He's under the weather. He emailed us this afternoon, so he won't be here. And Dieter is out of town. And Corey will probably join us, but a bit late. But we've got enough people for Quorum, so we will plow ahead. I think our first item of business is approval of the minutes. I will just give everyone a moment to take a peek. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It was quite a meeting, with the length of the minutes. Much was accomplished. Just moving on to the next item.
This clip would not have been here if I excuse myself. I actually was next door at the cocktail.
Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, we did speak with the foundation and asked them if they can to try to avoid the evenings that we have a meeting, but it's hard. There's only so many nights in the year. So, next item, financial reports. I don't think we have, in your packages, there's the normal set of information. We obviously approved the, well, we as a board approved the budget last time and then forwarded it to the next step before the election in May, but there's no update, Jean, unless you have anything on the current financials. No? Thank you. Statistics report, I don't have anything in particular. The statistics are in here as they normally are, and so please feel free to peruse those at your convenience. WLS report.
Okay. Very briefly, because what I'm going to say is in the newsletter anyway, so you'll get more details in that. The first thing is that we were told that the migration to the new online catalog, the Evergreen, went very smoothly, countywide, pretty much. There were a few glitches here and there, but nothing to write home about. It went very well. And I believe that here in New Rochelle as well, that that was a great success. So that was one. The second one is that about network security. The WLS network experienced a mild spam virus attack that brought down the computer network for several months for many libraries. I think we were spared that, but several libraries were seriously affected. One of them was Ossining. In fact, the director of that library came over and spoke at length about how seriously affected they were. And for about two months, I believe, they had to try to resolve the problem. They engaged technicians, they tried to get help from WLS, and sort of hinted that what they received was not so much what they expected. It was a bit of a criticism, which the executive director denied. I had lunch with him on Tuesday, and then we chatted, we'll get on that, and he said they tried to provide all kind of help to Ossining, but somehow it did not filter out to the director. But as a result of the experience of Ossining, the board decided that maybe the management should come out with some proposals of how to deal with this kind of problem, should any library be affected, which could also involve protection from cyber attack, and also maybe build up some kind of relations, informal relations with the law enforcement officials, so that if there is something that's a little suspicious that required the intervention of the authorities, you know, then they should be involved in that. So that was discussed then. So at our next meeting on the 30th of April this month, I think Terry is going to be presenting us with some proposal of how to deal with this problem, how to assist a library that is affected budget-wise, technically, et cetera, which I thought was very good. We were told that WLS received this year a contract from Westchester County for $1 million, which is equal to what it received last year.
Is that funding from the county?
Yeah, funding from the county. I don't want to call it contract, anyway, funding. I think this was as a result of a visit by the WLS representatives of Albany on the 27th of February, you know, the usual contact with these people, and to maintain their interest, so that was quite positive. I was supposed to go on that, but it was not possible to be on board. The next thing was the Westchester Libraries Breakfast. I think Mr. Chairman, you were there.
I was there.
Yes. We had this meeting, it was my first, at Ry Brook, and Michelle Young, who is the new president of New York Library Association, was the keynote speaker. I think she spoke very well about the challenges of the libraries, how we can use libraries as a forum for resolving community issues, how we could improve technically, et cetera, some of the things were new to me, but this is spoke at length on that, followed by a few lawmakers who took the floor for a few minutes to place their support for the library system, so that was good. The next item is the next year's census. We're told that the New York State Assembly and the Senate have included $40 million in their budgets for census funding for community-based organizations. I think the census is one area where the libraries are going to be involved. In fact, in White Plains, I think a committee has been formed at the county level to begin preparing for this exercise. And fortunately, our own director, executive director, Terry, is a member of that board as well, so that gives us a footing. And this is beginning to pick up steam. In fact, Michelle at the breakfast also referred to that, so we'll have to keep an eye on it. Another thing is more PR, perhaps. The board was very happy when we were told that my predecessor, Dr. LaRuth, was being awarded a lifetime service award, and that happened yesterday. It was very, very nice of him. The last item was, there was a screening of Resilience. I don't know what the Resilience is. It's a kind of a documentary about...
ISIS.
About what?
ISIS.
Yeah. Yeah. There was a screening of that, and then I didn't quite follow what the purpose of the screening was, but I think the idea was to see how libraries could be used as a forum for dealing with certain community problems, like drugs, domestic abuse, and things like that, and an abuse of children, particularly those who are being adversely affected, but they don't know where to turn. How can the community try to come to rescue of children in that category? She recommended that this documentary should be screened in as many libraries as possible. I was told subsequently that, I think they were screened twice. She told me herself that it was screened twice here in New Rochelle.
Oh.
So if you're interested in that, and I hope you will, I could ask her to see if that can be arranged, so that the documentary could be screened here, followed by some discussions. I found it quite fascinating, the progress.
Resilience?
Hmm?
Resilience?
Resilience, yes, that's the, what is called...
Here in April.
Yeah, here, yeah, in New Rochelle. One surprise, they're very eager to show this thing around, followed by discussions. After seeing that movie, you'd be amazed, at least I was, of the extent of the problems that are sort of below the surface in the community that we probably don't have time to focus on, particularly those that are affecting the most vulnerable of our community, young children, people in broken homes, et cetera. And it's good to see that the problem is not hopeless, it's solvable, that however enormous it may be, you can at least begin to make a dent into it. And she would like to see if this dent could be enlarged, so that the problem could be weakened as quickly as we can. So those were the main points that came up. This afternoon, we had an audit committee at 2:00. My position has been that I don't want to be in any committee for the first six months. I just want to have an overview of what happens at WLS. And so I was advised that the best entrance into this, getting an overview, is to begin with auditing the audit committee. Yeah, and sit there and see what they do. So I went at 2:00 today. It was very interesting, the auditor was there, and then they went through all the financial statements, et cetera. So it does give you an overview of what is happening. The organization seems to be well-run, and everybody's happy with it, it's tightly controlled, relaxed, but tightly controlled, that they're very much within their budget of $6.2 million, and they run the ship fairly well. So the, after the meeting, the management left the room, so we were free to gossip behind them and find out how they do things, and it was a general consensus that things were going well. So I will be sticking with the audit committee for a while, and then maybe start auditing other committees, and maybe by September also, then I'll choose a committee where I'd like to see where I could make any contribution. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And the breakfast, it was a nice event at the Arrowood, interesting, good gathering of the community. So we don't have a president's report or a director's report tonight, as you know, I usually cede my time to Tom, so we don't have any report in that vein this evening. There is one item I'll do now, which is not a report, but the, as folks will know, the way that our financial controls work, there's sort of, you know, the school district treasurer is involved in the way that we move money, in the way that we move cash, et cetera, so this is more of an operational matter than anything else, but we need to put forth a resolution to add the treasurer, Laura Del Principio, and the deputy treasurer, Lori Rule, as signatories to our existing HSBC bank accounts. So Tom has, you know, reached out to me, advised me, this is all sort of standard stuff, there's no, they're not taking control over our budget, et cetera. It's more of an operational matter, because there's checks and balances, we put in, you know, requests for, as we all know, we sign these forms, we put in requests, then it goes to the school district, and so I think in the, you know, adding these folks to the bank accounts actually moves the money and pay the bills above board. So the, I'm just holding in my hand the actual form that I signed earlier, and I'm just going to read, and then if anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to ask, but I'm going to put forth a motion that we add Laura Del Principio, district treasurer, and Lori Rule, deputy treasurer of the school district, offices located at 515 North Avenue, as signatories to the library's bank account at HSBC in New Rochelle. Do I need to read the language? This, okay. It just says, I'll just read it. "Duly organized and validly existing under the laws of the above state, New York, and if applicable, that the resolutions set forth below are provided separately to HSBC Bank USA National Association have been duly opted by the Board of the New Rochelle Public Library Depositor," that we are the depositor, "at a meeting duly called and held on April 11, 2019, that each of such resolutions is in full force and effect, and none has been rescinded, revoked, or modified, and that none of such resolutions nor any action pursuant thereto will violate any law, regulation, charter, bylaw, or agreement by which depositor is governed." You will thank me, and then I'm not going to read the five sub-points, but this is not our form, this is a form from the HSBC, this is their document. So I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Del Principio and Ms. Rule if the treasurer's office has authorized signatories on our HSBC bank account.
One second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was, I know, scintillating. All right. I don't think we have any grants or foundations, or, you know, that would have been part of Tom's. There's not, he didn't, did he give you anything?
HVAC grant.
Okay.
Just, we're going to close next month, the theater HVAC grant, and there's just two nice checks that are filed that you have to approve, and we'll be closing that right next month.
Okay, I'll just repeat, I'll just repeat that the grant that paid for some of the HVAC work in the theater is being closed out, and so we're cutting the final checks to the contractor to close that out. So that's positive. The next item on the list, I don't think we have a personnel report. Let me just check my folder to make sure that... As you can see, I'm a poor imitation for Tom. No, yeah, so no personnel report tonight. Let's go into committee reports. The budget committee has no report. We had our grand finale of the year last meeting. Building and grounds committee, need to report?
Yes. So as you know, we're doing...
Oh, can you pull them in?
Okay. We are accepting submissions from vendors to do the building audit that we talked about. We hadn't done one in 10 years, so... Sorry? Oh, the building audits. So today was actually the submission deadline, and there was a walkthrough of the building at the end of March.
I have three packages of stairs around.
Okay. Is that the total? Okay. So the committee will review them, and we'll have a meeting with the capital resource oversight committee?
Crocs.
Croc. Croc.
I actually knew the real name.
Sarah, do you think if you agree, we could maybe ask Jean or Tom, because we did this for the needs assessment committee, RFP submissions? Tom scanned them. Oh, they're so thick, you can't...
I mean, I have both of them packaged, but they're quite thick.
Do they include any digital, like, medium notes? Okay. So if they do have it digitally, if we could, like, form a Dropbox or something, because that's the...
You can do that.
I think so.
Yeah.
And then hopefully they incl...
Right, let us know if it's easy.
Yeah.
Because we don't want you to spend a lot of time doing it, if it isn't.
But we also should have more than one copy.
Right, we definitely need a copy.
I imagine, I think...
I would imagine it's more than one copy there?
Yeah.
Because they're so thick. So I'll get some tomorrow, and I'll...
Oh, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay.
Eager to see them.
I couldn't make the walkthrough, but how did the walkthrough go?
I couldn't make that either, so...
So it was Tom.
Tom will have to tell us how that went. Actually, he did say that it went fine. There were people that showed up, obviously. And then the elevator update. Our elevator is still not working, but hopefully by the end of April, it will be up and running. So thank you very much for your patience. We know it's an inconvenience to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Community relations. So, March 25th, we had Barbara, who was given, was honored and given a proclamation by the County Board of Legislators for Outstanding Woman and Contributor to Our Community, Westchester County in Rochelle. That was March 25th, so that March 25th was Barbara Davis' day, so we give her congrats and her props for everything she has done for the community. And yesterday was the Rotary Club's Centennial Gala, which many of us attended. I gotta say, and I was just telling this to Frances, that it was the fastest and shortest program I have ever been to in any event here in, oh, New Rochelle, and I give you props for that, because you figured it out, and you gotta tell me the secret of how...
Eight, how many? Were there eight? Like, five?
And it was eight honorings or something like that?
Lifetime.
And it was, it was two hours after to mingle and dance and connect and network, so it was really awesome, so I give you major props for that. And just a few announcements that Barbara sent out. In the meantime, Sarah, do you want to give any update on the art teacher stuff? I know we...
Oh, yes. So he talked about how we were going to do a coloring book contest with the elementary schools, so there are actually seven art teachers, because board school has two, so all art teachers are suggesting that their students participate in the coloring book contest, so we sent over some rules to them, and the deadline is May 31st, so we should have their submissions by then.
Thank you. And then two events. Don't Get Sued, activities to protect your small business at the library that's being sponsored by the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation, the Bar, New Rochelle Bar Association, and the Chamber of Commerce. It's a free program, Tuesday, April 16, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. here in this theater. So they're going to have three panelists, from insurance people to lawyers, are going to really talk about it, just not getting sued, that's a small business. And Music in Our Lives, a concert at the library, Song Catchers continues a series of Music in Our Lives, and that will happen Saturday, April 27, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. here at this theater. And also, in regards to New Rochelle Foundation, if you haven't bought your tickets yet, there's still time. Invitations went out, so please, 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 because it's going to be a fantastic event.
May 9th.
May 9th, yeah. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you. Finance committee, I don't think we have an update. We might have, had we met as we had expected to tonight, and I will take the blame for that. But the finance committee, the thing that's on our agenda is to look at some of these one-time items potentially for the fund balance, and, you know, I guess the biggest ticket that's on the list is a potential replacement of a library van, which, when I joined the board five years ago, was like, the van is about to croak, so, you know, it hasn't gotten any younger in that time, but there's a few, a few, you know, worthy items like that, so we're just, we're going to look at that and revert to this group by the next meeting with a recommendation. Needs Assessment Committee. Can I just add something as we're going into needs and talk about? Moving forward, just for us to think about, if we put in another RFP, can we just make sure we request the amount of copies that we want, and that they put it electronically, either a thumb drive or... Because I know a lot of RFPs do that, but we just want to make sure, because it's a hassle to get a packet of that amount and scan them and lose pages. So if they submit it electronically, I know county RFPs and other stuff, you have to, you have to submit at least a thumb drive or a disk or something, so just to keep that in mind. My guess is if we have an issue with any of the things that have been submitted, we can probably just reach back out to the Vanessa's, just digitally. Right.
Yeah. That's a good point.
But I agree, I think it's a really good point.
I think I'm the only one here on the needs assessment committee, so I will give the update. We received two submissions. We extended the deadline and received two submissions, and...
In total, or?
In total.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is, and we've spoken with Tom about setting up a section on the library website, so that we can just report out, kind of not, like, kind of on an ongoing basis between meetings. We will share, post the RFP, we'll post the submissions and the criteria by which we think we will judge those submissions, because there's two. So the next step is after the upcoming break, we're going to be holding interviews. We're holding an hour each for each submitter, and we're breaking up each hour into 20-minute chunks. The first hour will be the board alone with the proposer. The second 20 minutes will be the board, the proposer, and Tom, and then Tom will be alone with the proposer. And then we will kind of reconvene and kind of discuss, we really think it's important that we have Tom's impression, because, you know, he's a huge part of the library, and we'll provide an update on our assessment and the criteria and what we think, and then we will then share what, share our selection, and then the next steps as far as a schedule and calendar, and what the community can expect as far as input and participation. And that's a... I just said that we will share out on our, we're kind of creating like a little side blog for this process, just to be as open and kind of continuously providing feedback in between meetings, so everyone can see what's going on. And just the next step after we hold our interview will be to, you know, just share our next steps, which we don't know yet, but we'll get there and share that, and you'll know right after we do. And I think that's it.
Do you know if the respondents were, like, local, or, I'm just...
They're both New York City-based, actually.
Okay, wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel committee.
We, Dieter chairs, there's been, we reviewed a couple of things, but we haven't, we don't have a recommendation yet, but we'll get there soon.
We won't hold it against you.
Thank you. But policy, we do have a few things to report back on. So since the last meeting, we were asked to look at three different policies, the sexual harassment policy, the policy around the amount to set aside in the fund balance, and a policy with respect to the, how vacancies are handled, vacancies that are related to, prior to like the expiration of a term. So I'll start with the easiest. The sexual harassment policy, Tom gave us the sample proposed by the state, which we recommend that the board adopt, with one exception, to ask, so throughout the policy, there's areas to fill in the blank, and with respect to where to report, we just thought it was very important to have it listed by department and group, the specific name, as opposed to just general report to your supervisor. So delineate who's the who, and in effort, Sarah raised a really good point of just cutting through any...
Are you putting, like, actual people's names or, like, titles?
We could probably do titles.
Department.
So the tricky part is the names would help to streamline the process, but appreciating that there's turnover, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, you can do either way, it's just, we have to, if we do the names, obviously, we have to make sure...
Just be mindful of turnover, right? But, but...
But titles, I mean, titles, I think.
I think titles and name, I mean, the theory, I think, is just to break through any impediment, right? And just, like, nobody has to double think or triple think who the person is, or the title is appropriate, or, so that was the thought around that. So that would be one thing we recommend adoption.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does the policy, I'm sorry, I haven't looked at it, but does the policy provide an avenue other than, like, what's the, I'm going to call it like the whistleblower avenue? What's, is there an avenue where people can go if they're not comfortable going to the supervisor?
Yeah, they have links to EEOC and phone number and everything else, so they have hyperlinks to throughout the state, other avenues, right? So they don't feel comfortable.
There's a way to go outside of the four walls.
Absolutely, absolutely. And there's references, and I mean, it even goes down to saying, contact the local police department, for example, but then also EEOC for the state, and via web and phone number, so there's different ways, by beyond the building.
Does that, does that show any policy of, like, no retaliation? Does that, does that show any policy of like no retaliation?
The anti-whistle, yeah, yeah.
Great.
The next one, let's see. Okay. The fund balance, we actually still had, go ahead.
Sorry, did we want to vote on that or not yet?
Um, I guess we could. Right. So, we were gonna recommend, we maybe just like to see how the slots are filled in and just make sure that it looks, so the reality is, is as long, if it makes sense to us who are not involved in the day-to-day, then it'll be, makes sense to hopefully someone who's new to the library and doesn't really know their way around it, but needs to report. So, that was sort of the thinking, but there was no other major changes other than more specificity along the reporting line in the office. For the fund balance policy, we reviewed everything and we still have tons of questions. I think we have specific questions, but we would like to meet with Jean separately before the next meeting. And actually, some of the things you raised today about identifying one-time projects, because as you can appreciate, that's one of the ways we can use the fund balance, was a question that was raised as well. So, before we set aside a number, what's out there? So, I don't want to work apart from finance and we certainly wanted to just include Jean. So, we've committed to setting up that meeting before our next board meeting.
Do you guys have the link to that webinar that happened?
We have the slides.
Oh, great.
Yes. And that's what we were sort of using actually to help guide some of the discussion. And Tom did a poll of our buddies in other jurisdictions around how they're approaching fund balance. And the reality is they're, they all have their own rules because technically by law, the library, when it's separated the way we are, we actually don't have a mandated amount. Just sort of guidelines and best practices on other municipal laws. So, that is TBD or to be, yeah, I guess to be discussed. And the last was related to how vacancies are decided. And we took a look. So, the city council has a policy. I'm just trying to pull up the actual, so Article nine, Section ninety-two. That's, it written down the way that the library has historically done this. In other words, appointments are made to fill vacancies until the next appropriate election cycle. I think it's fair to say we had a discussion around the pros and cons around that, but ultimately, and tonight, I think it's funny, the way the universe works is that in terms of having the board operate, you know, to operate, the appointment process does work because if not, you could be in a situation like tonight where we wouldn't have quorum and the library, just the board would not be able to operate until the next election. And we just thought it was important to sort of allow the board to function and carry the duties that the library needs, that the board does in our service. And so, we don't have a, we'd like to emulate the language that's written in the city charter code and then we'll report that for the next meeting. But it was really, I thought it was a good discussion and I think it just made us realize that when there are appointments, to make sure that we share the news beyond our immediate circle just to, so that the community feels like everybody has a shot at participating in the process. But we didn't want to change best practices to sort of do, you know, think about ways to hold ourselves accountable to that piece. So, I think in May, we'll have a bit more to actually vote on, with the exception of, oh, that's it. Everything needs to be voted on in May. Right.
Policy committee's been busy.
We were busy.
Thank you. Do we have a sculpture garden update?
No.
Okay.
No update.
Time is it?
That's all right.
Sorry.
Are there, before we go to the public to be heard, are there any other items of new business that anyone would like to raise?
Can we, for the purposes of the video, what date and time is our next meeting? I know we shifted it because of the budget timing.
Seven o'clock, I think, on May seventh, because I think we're gonna do the budget hearing from seven to seven-thirty and then the regular meeting at seven-thirty. That's my recollection.
Okay, great. I just wanted to.
Yeah, and the, because of the timing, I don't have my phone with my calendar. Because of the timing of the upcoming election, we have to hold our meeting with a budget hearing before the upcoming election. So, we're having it earlier in the month than we typically would. And so, it's May seventh.
It's a Tuesday because that's the, May ninth would have been our meeting, but because of the gala, the fund gala, we had to move it.
So, Tuesday, May seventh, seven o'clock, budget hearing, seven-thirty, normal meeting.
And I'll also add that we're going to be having a reception for Dr. LaRuth Gray at six PM and that's open to the public. Here. Yes. So, just before that budget hearing.
Seven-thirty.
It's a busy night. Thank you.
And at six in the?
It's at six o'clock in the meeting room.
Okay, so everybody is welcome.
Everybody is welcome to come.
And that's, this is just so people know about the timing of the meeting. We, I mean, it's not on Thursday because of the gala and we didn't want to conflict, but this is, every year, we have to hold, the meeting timing is always adjusted because we've got to do it before the election.
And it's within a certain window.
Yeah, you have to do it with a certain amount of days of the election.
Seven to twenty-one days, seven to fourteen days.
Look at you, reading up on all the statutes. Very impressive. So, that, is that, oh, and the only other thing that I would mention to the group is the, you know, we've, I guess, neighborhood association meetings vis-à-vis budget and obviously any candidates. The, I think there was one.
Yeah, there was, there was one last week.
Yep.
The Residence Park.
Yep.
And I don't think we've gotten an updated schedule.
The calendar's been slow.
Yeah. There's one in on the April twenty-fourth, East End, and then there's one on the twenty-fifth, which is, well, it's, it's not certain yet, but the GLA, I think, was April twenty-fifth. And I'm sure there will be another few more. I'm gonna go to the Confederation and then I'm gonna show up in my gala attire and then I will go off to the gala. So, I'll probably feel overdressed at that meeting, but it's okay.
Internet be over than underdressed. And so, you know, what I will do is I'll ask Tom to reach out again to his contacts and see if there's anybody that, because typically, we have a bit more on the calendar in terms of neighborhood associations. And I would just encourage everybody in the room here today, everybody that, the massive audience that views our meetings, if you have a neighborhood association or neighborhood or any kind of community organization where you would like, you know, members of the board, you know, and/or Tom to come and, you know, give a preview of the, you know, the budget, we're happy to do that. So, please feel free to encourage folks to reach out to us. Does anybody know if there's a League of Women Voters Candidate Forum scheduled at this point?
I haven't heard of anything.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Tom about that too. Just gonna write it down so I don't forget. Because typically, there's a candidate's forum, which I think at times has been around the time of our budget hearing, but not always.
When are petitions due?
Don't know.
Uh, May first.
So, I feel like it's after petitions are due because then that's when they know the candidates are. So, like, so timing.
Right.
Timing wise, that's when probably did it. You guys did it last year, it was around after petitions, so.
I'll ask Tom to try to find out because I'm sure there, I would be shocked if there wasn't one. Okay. Let's go to the public to be heard. First person is Dan Miller.
Hi, I'm Dan Miller, fourteen Lakeside Drive, New Rochelle. Hi. Been a little while since I've been here. It's good to see you all again. I just want to start by appreciating the board's interest in the film Resilience. As a physician and a leader of a large community health center network in the Hudson Valley and New York City and beyond, a lot of my own work focuses on how traumatic experiences in childhood really kind of resonate throughout our lives and a lot of our work in the health center does. I think it's, it's a really, it's quite an extraordinary film and worth bringing out to the community as much as we possibly can. So, I, you know, it's been shown here twice and I think with a good audience, I think there's room to do more. If there's any way I can be supportive, I'd be happy to be. As I say, I haven't been here for a while, but I've been following and I, and I know there's been discussion at recent meetings about everyone's concern about the possible interest of the developers in building on the parking lot properties and everyone's, you know, real wish that we don't have high rises dwarfing the library. And I'm just, I'm curious for an update of, I know you all have been looking into ways to see how to perhaps influence politically and otherwise to help that not happen. Is there an update on how that's faring?
No update. I mean, I think we mentioned, not at the last meeting, but maybe the meeting before, the fact that we had reached out to the city commissioner of development and then were directed to RXR, who did confirm they were conducting some soil core sampling there. And then we did make an ask of them that if they were considering any scenario that would make those parking lots not accessible, that they reach out to us to hope, to work with us to develop a solution to address the parking needs of our patrons and staff. And they confirmed that they would do that verbally and via an email, which was the subject of a freedom of information law request, which we granted and provided to the requester. So, that's the last contact, to my knowledge, unless anybody else does.
You know, I find myself remembering, I think it was Corey's presentation of what an extraordinary asset the library is in its current state to the city. And just, you know, I think I and we want to support you all in really driving home to the city politics that, that anything that diminishes the library is, is really a problem in the city and the power you have in that. Is there a way we can support you in, in making that point and in really trying to prevent this, you know, this harm to the library?
I, I guess I would just, I don't, nothing personally comes to mind in immediate term. Look, I would just reiterate, I was actually looking, maybe you'll find that I'm a strange person, but at the trustees, the library trustees handbook earlier today, just, I was going through the roles of trustee. And that is our, our role of trustees is to protect and, and have this, you know, library be the resource that it is to the community. That's kind of, that is like at the core kernel of what we do. And so, you know, I don't, you know, certainly making your views known as you see fit, but I don't, nothing immediately comes to mind, but.
Okay.
I don't know that we feel under threat, I guess is what I would say. Yeah.
Okay. I, I think obviously there are those of us who are more concerned, are concerned about that threat and if there's ways we can be of support and help with that, we'd like to be. And lastly, Whitney, I, I'm intrigued with the idea of posting some of this material online. You know, and it brings up the question, I think, not infrequently at these meetings, questions get raised that can't be answered in the meeting. And I'm wondering, is there a way to get that information either between meetings or rather than just kind of coming and asking over and over again for updates? Is there a way to kind of help that flow of information?
I mean, we can speak to the director. I, I think we, you know, I'll speak, others may speak. I think we try to make an effort if something is raised as a question to address it and it may take till the next meeting, but that is oftentimes because, you know, there's folks that, you know, we confer. And obviously, you know, we don't all see each other that frequently. And it may be referred to a committee for consideration. And so, I think there's oftentimes, you know, reason that it takes a little while to kind of come back with a response. But I thought I knew of this review.
Well, that's also just, I think, the point of our little ad hoc blog is so that you can check it between meetings and we're, the Needs Assessment Committee are all working professionals. So, I think you, please be patient if it's not like, you know, but we also, all of our emails are online. I mean, it's not hard to get in touch with us if you have a question about anything. But we just, you know, we know people are interested in how we're picking things and we put a post out, we extended the deadline, we're trying to get the word out. All we got was two responses. I'm disappointed. I wish that we got more. They happened to be good and I think I'm pleased with the two. So, I think the scenario could be much worse. I think it's pretty good and we're eager to hear what people think about that and hope that, you know, that the selected proposer is, you know, serves our, you know, that meets the stipulated set of goals within the RFP and that we can move forward and that everyone is, who is interested in participating can participate and that we can get as many people as possible. That's really the goal. So, as far as helping and support, get the word out. So, you know, please help us and get people, as many people as possible to tell us what you do want. So, we know what you don't want, but we want to hear what you do want. So, how does the library move forward? What kind of programming? What kind of, you know, films and other activities would you like to see here? What kind of space would you like it to be in? Do you want gardens? Do you want sculpture gardens? Do you want public art? You know, that kind of thing, we're really eager to hear. So, that's why we're setting this up.
And, and you're hoping to, to get that information through the blog? Or through other ways of communicating those interests to you?
The needs assessment process would, would bring that information in. And we will be posting, so we'll be process that we're going through and then we're going to be posting out about that process to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing.
Okay. So, I recognize my time's probably up here. As best as possible to really make clear to, to everybody how to get that, those opinions and visions to you, you know, in exactly what forms and how.
The blog will be one of many. Yes, absolutely.
That's part of what will come out of, that's part of why we're hiring professionals to help us.
Be creative around engagement and getting the feedback. And I think the blog will help supplement that because inevitably. So, as I understand it, the blog would help to support and report out in between. It's another, right. Kind of thing, not the library, the monthly.
Between the month.
Right.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Sax.
The public view that, that film. If there is interest, then I'll get in touch with the management in.
I think there would be interest. It's a powerful, as you say, it's a powerful film and I think in a, in a, in a message, I know in, in my work in healthcare and I think, you know, you're, you know, this, these concepts, they've been around for a long time, but they're, you know, I'd almost say revolutionary in, in really understanding what affects our health and how our, our health is affected. And I think the more we, we get this out, absolutely the better for everybody. So.
Okay.
And the beauty of it too is that when Barbara does it, I know there's always a facilitator that comes in and really opens up a discussion about it. And so, yeah, I agree with you as a nonprofit, proper youth development and work with early childhood and young adults, it definitely is an eye-opener. It is a very powerful movie. And even as adults, it can bring up a lot of emotions and relive trauma. So, it's always a positive thing to, in any, any cultural religion to watch this because it really just dives into just development in young, these young people and the society that we're living in. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I actually have handouts for you. Last, last time I was speaking about, there is an issue about trust and mistrust and I asked people to really educate themselves. And I said, you know what, I, I had offered to do this a while ago and I'm holding myself accountable. I'm gonna give you, yeah. And if you could make sure that that's part of the public record. This is a letter from December of two thousand and fifteen to Dr. Mary Ellen Elliott, who's the New York State Commissioner of Education. I think that's her title. Anyway, this is a two-page letter. It, it speaks a little bit to what I spoke about last time, the inappropriateness of the city getting involved with the master developers about selling the library. So, this is gonna give you a little history of how long we've been involved in this. And you can also note that other than our now-president Burke, the entire board is different. So, there's been major changes in, in your board in this period of time. So, it just speaks to, again, a community trusting a board is, is a powerful thing and that when a city is involved in ways they shouldn't be, it's not their decision what happens to this library. A community responds to that with mistrust and that trust has to be earned again. And when the board changes, as it has, then trust has to be built again. So, I just want to, over time, give you some more history about this. I know some of you may have seen this already, but I think that this, I think it's important. So, I will try to get other communications that we have had to, you know, before many of you were on the board, to let you know other things that we have been. Um, so I will try to get other communications that we have had to, you know, before many of you were on the board, to let you know other things that we have been concerned about and some of the history of this. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further business. If I could just ask you to sign in so we have your name for the record.
Since she's finishing or? Hello, good evening, I'm Ali Mercado, and as a instructor for after-school programs, I travel throughout Westchester a lot. And as a parent of children who attend New Rochelle Public Library, I've come to notice that in your program, it's not in Spanish. And I think that's why, if you look around, I'm, I'm Hispanic, but it's because I'm bilingual, I know English, but you're not gonna get people to come out. We have to reach out to the community, so we, so if we, we have the Spanish on the other side, they're gonna feel some kind of connection and start building that trust and understanding how they feel. And in the future, we're gonna have another program, like the gentleman's secretary, the Okilo, about uh what it was affecting the community, and we want them to come out. Have to have it in Spanish, because most of the people in New Rochelle are Hispanic. Also, my other concern, I was here a couple of months ago, and I raised a question about the policy, and I was still, oh, go online, it's online. But I don't know if you guys realize, and walk around the library, a lot of people that come here don't have Wi-Fi at home. So it would be nice, especially the, a lot of the parents, you have it where it's accessible. The same way you have all those papers on the second floor, have it where it's accessible, these are the policies of the New Rochelle Public Library. And it would be nice if you can have it in Spanish as well. I'm purely bilingual, I know you guys have your job, but I also, I'm also very active in my community with the Salvation Army and New York Covenant Church. Um, I could give you guys my email and I can translate if you guys would like in writing, or it won't be like the young lady said overnight, but I can help out, you know, because this is not about you guys or about me, this is about us, we. And we have to come together and help each other out. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, that's, that's very helpful, and we um, we will uh make sure that we catch up with Tom on this and and, you know, we'll give an update at a future meeting.
I, I do have to ask, which program specifically, because I have seen the translation on programs that I've looked at, so where were you looking?
The monthly program, I see that on one side it's March, February, the other side it's March, but it's not in in Spanish on the other side.
It's the mail.
Okay, so it may be on one side, February.
The printed one, you're talking about the printed one?
That gets mailed out?
The ones that are in the children's section that you can pick up.
The newsletter.
Most of the Hispanic parents that do come and don't know English, because you guys have a staff that's bilingual, they're able to tell them word of mouth, this activity is happening, all their kids might tell them. But it's not the same, the same uh, the same thing if they read it, they're accurate, okay, this is, these are the activities that I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful feedback.
So I, I just want to say something, so I, I, I totally uh support you on that one, but I do want to say that um I, like what's out, there's a lot of material that I've seen in in Spanish, even on the website. Aside from Spanish allows me to convert the language that's there to any uh language uh that's there. But I know specifically when they target um uh specific events, like the ESL passes, some of the youth uh programs that I've seen, I, there is a lack of 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 spreading more not, knowledge in in Spanish about information. But I do know that the Community Relations Office really tries hard, and I know um it's, it's, I mean, when we can go even further, I, I don't think that's just an issue here at the library. I think we can break the mold um um in doing that, I think that's a big issue across the community in 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 New Rochelle. Um, but that'll be a project that I think we can discuss and Community Relations and see if there's translation services or something, because I know it takes a lot of work and effort to put that newsletter together. Um, and as you know, in the Spanish language, the contents of the sentence changes completely, and sometimes you'll have two paragraphs from one. So um I, I, I'll be more than happy to look into that and see, not only in Spanish, but also see what other language services we may have in our community. Uh, from Portuguese, Supriol, to any other languages that may be available, um, or how we can put that bulletin electronically where the, you know, technology can convert a lot of the words of there rather than printing it out and wasting paper as well. You know, we have to be conservative about that as well, so um I, thank you for that, and we appreciate it.
But it's not wasting paper, because there's a lot of people that come here that do not have internet.
For sure, for sure, absolutely.
But if you be very observant and you go to the children's section or the teenage and you can see, you know.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you for taking the time to to come and share that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.